I need to test to make sure you can hear me, Greg or somebody, can you tell me? Okay, thanks.
I can hear you. Okay, we are broadcasting live on YouTube and attendees will be starting in just a minute as soon as we have all of our board members here. We're also still waiting for one more interpreter that will get going at that point. So probably Brandy after you call the meeting to order, then Joe can speak in Spanish just to explain how folks can access the channel.
Okay, sounds good. Let's give Inez another minute or two here.
Welcome to Brian and Bob and Dave and Ron and Karen and Nikki and Ann and Luke hadn't said hi to you yet and Shannon as well.
Good evening to you, Greg.
All right, I see Inez getting connected up here. We'll be able to get started.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having connection issues. Give me a second.
All right.
We can hear you loud and clear, Inez, so that portion's coming through.
Inez, do you need any support from Greg? Or Luke? Or anyone but me, because I probably can't really help that much. Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started and Inez, if you need any support on that, let someone know, okay? All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. We'll go ahead and start with our flag salute and tonight Bob has graciously volunteered to lead us in that. You're muted, Bob. Sorry.
This will probably work better. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. All right, so tonight's agenda, we'll have our normal start.
Can we have Joe give his word?
Thank you, thank you for the reminder. Thank you, Joe, and for those of you who don't speak Spanish, we have interpretive services tonight for our board meeting for the first time in Spanish, which is great, so. Hopefully everything goes well. All right, I'm on track, right Greg? This is why Greg gets paid for the big box, right? Okay. So tonight we'll have public comment. I think we have five or six public comments. We'll move into board comments, going to superintendent comments. Review our consent agenda. We'll have our monthly financial report with Nikki. We'll get a bond update both through from the district and also from the PAC. And also the two ad hoc committees, both our start time and our equity committee will be giving updates tonight. Then we'll get an enrollment report from Greg, Division 22 assurances from Greg as well. Discuss our board professional development topics that we chatted about last week and then also have a discussion regarding in-person board meetings. So let's go ahead and get started. Public comments, I'm just going to read this reminder to everybody in case we have people who haven't given comments before. The Newburgh School Board invites and encourages citizens' attendance and involvement. The Board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, to raise questions, concerns, or compliments. Thank you to everyone who has submitted a request to speak and to those who sent in comments. In order to conduct a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Requests to speak during the meeting are not accepted. When called, please state your name, your relationship to the district, place of residence, and the subject which you will be addressing. The Board may choose not to address your requests if the topic is outside the scope of board governance. We ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performances. I also ask that your comments focus on board members' actions and refrain from personal or character attacks. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. As a board, the comments we hear help guide us in our decisions and help educate us as leaders in this community. So let's get started. First up, let's have Katia and after Katia we'll have Levi.
Pardon me, Brandy, is it three minutes today?
Three minutes, thanks Ron. Yeah. So Katia followed by Jody. Hi Katia, welcome, go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
My name is Katia Pender. I'm a student at the Newburgh School District and I live in Newburgh. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. To be honest, I wanted to do it because I care a lot about my school being a safe place. And I can speak from personal experience and tell you that school has not always been a safe place for me. Sometimes because of the color of my skin and sometimes because of the violence that exists in the outside world. I feel like it is always threatening to the school building. When I started seeing photos and videos of the political rally that happened on the Newburgh High School campus on Sunday. I was confused at first. I was confused why I saw these pictures and videos of people hanging out together, laughing and talking close up with no masks on, hardly social distancing. And I wondered why they're allowed to be at school and all of us students aren't allowed to attend school in person this year. It felt like they didn't care at all that rallies like this are keeping us from being in school this year. Then I saw pictures of people wearing guns at this rally. It honestly freaked me out. Every year, my entire school life, we have to go through these terrifying active school draws at school. Leading up to those days, they give warnings that it is coming. I experienced nightmares, panic attacks, there's a having to enter school property now. That's why you have to get permission to enter the school property. And it's why you have to get buzzed into the building. Buzzed to enter the building. School was supposed to be a safe place to learn and spend time at class. And instead, somehow, a whole bunch of people who went to see Donald Trump get elected were allowed to come onto our school grounds with guns and big flags, yelling, raising their white power. Hand signals and some people seemed proud of this. I'm fine when people express their political opinions freely. I know it's the right to do that, but please keep them from doing it at schools in ways that make me even more scared to show up there than I already am. Thank you.
Thank you, Katia.
Yeah, I'll just interject there that for those who had difficulty hearing, we apologize for that. And Katia, your audio was coming a lot behind your video, so that's why we're just finishing up now. And we apologize to those Spanish speakers because the interpreter was not able to hear and make that interpretation. These comments have already been sent to me, so they will be in the published minutes that will be in next meeting's board packet.
Great, thank you Greg and thank you Katia. Okay, next we have Jody and after Jody we'll have Brandon.
Okay, I tried this again. Jody Jones is reading for her son, but her audio isn't working, so we're trying on her husband's account, but there's two of them, so I don't know if I promoted the right one.
Jared, are you ready to give comment or is it the wrong?
Greg, I'm sorry, I think it's the other one.
Okay, I will do the other one. I may, I'm gonna have to do both at once because they're the exact same name and when they go back, I can't tell which is which, so. All right, there's Jody at least.
Yeah, thank you Greg, sorry about that. I'm Jody Jones, a mother of a seventh grader and sophomore. And I'm actually reading these, this statement for my son Levi Jones, who is a Newburgh High School sophomore. And we live in Newburgh. So this is Levi Jones' statement. As you all know, last Sunday, October 25th, there was a rally held in support of the US President. As far as I know, this rally was held on NHS campus without any permission from any staff member from the school district. People came to the NHS campus without permission and when I found out about this, it made me pretty mad without me even being near where it was happening. Even I, as a white male, can feel unsafe about what is happening in our town and government when often people from diverse backgrounds don't feel supported politically. I could never imagine how unsafe others who are not white and male might feel about this happening on our own school campus. I somewhat understand that no staff member knew that this rally was going to happen. And I also have heard that there were staff members from NHS on campus during this time. I asked to make it a rule that if there is any staff member of the school district that sees anything like this happening again on Newburgh school campuses, that they must alert the district office or police as soon as possible. I believe that doing this will help prevent any unnecessarily violent violence and trespassing in the future and we will all feel safer. What makes me the most angry about this rally was that there were guns in possession of some people participating. Not police officers or federal agents, but people from who knows where on a school campus with guns. To keep our schools safe, I ask schools, please, please let the public know that this is against the law and also to keep people accountable when needed. I ask this because it seems that what the district is currently doing to let people know about this law did not work. I hope that change can be made to our school district and I hope this change can make students feel safe at school like they should. Thank you. Thank you, Jody, and also Levi. Okay, next we have Brandon and after Brandon, we're gonna have Sophia.
Sorry, am I on here now? Am I good? Sorry, am I, am I good now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. I wasn't at this, this parade or rally or whatever it was. I heard about it later, so I wasn't there. But I guess I, I guess I wanted to call in because I assumed that there would be quite a few people calling in, talking about how I guess horrified there was that there was a parade or something to that effect or people met at the high school. Again, I wasn't there, so I don't, I don't know, but I guess what I wanted to make clear is a couple of things. Number one, I mean, the high school parking lot on the Sunday is first of all, I mean, it's public property. And that's a premise open to the public. I mean, so there is no law that says that somebody cannot go there or meet there. I don't know anything about, you know, I know there's been accusations of guns. I certainly haven't seen any proof of that. I know quite a few people in law enforcement and I haven't heard about anything like that. Doesn't, I'm not saying there was or wasn't, I don't know, but I certainly haven't heard that. But what I find, I guess upsetting or concerning here is how fast is this, the school district jumps in to condemn somebody or a group of people having a parade or whatever it was, I think it was a parade, and they met at the school. Because they're supporting the president. And people on the board or in the district don't support him or a lot of people don't, and that's the issue. And so this, this is, this acts as a political statement and a political agenda more so than anything else. I'm not sure why the, the, the school district and how anybody could feel unsafe about some people meeting in a, in a school parking lot. And I'm just concerned here because this seems to be an ongoing pattern with the school, with this, with this board that, that they take the, the, they seem to think that they have the right to tell people where they, they can't go, what words they can't say, what things they can't, can't do. And it's, it's, it's extremely concerning to me that, that this is happening and that this is going on here. And I can tell you that irregardless of how many people call in here and say that, I guess that they were upset because somebody met in a parking lot. That's, I don't think that's the overwhelming view of, of, of the community. And, you know, it's, these things that, these things that are being mentioned here aren't against the law. I mean, school people have a right to, I mean, again, I don't know about guns, but people do have a right to carry concealed guns on a, on a, on a parking lot if they want to. I don't, I don't know what, what was or wasn't there. But I would just say this, you know, you know, we do have freedoms in this country and just because the school board or the school district doesn't support, doesn't support this president, doesn't mean that you can stop people from, from exercising those rights. And I, and I'll just finish with this. I have a suspicion that if this had been a rally or a, a parade for Biden or for Black Lives Matter, I have a feeling that this school district and this school board would have not only not said anything, but likely would have been there in support. And that tells me an awful lot about where we're at. So I will just, I guess I will, we'll close with that. But the, the, the trampling of, of rights on this, from this school board in terms of whether it's free speech or whether it's the right to assemble or anything else that you guys have issues with because you don't, because it goes against your political agendas is noted. And, and, you know, there are, there are people that are against it and I'm one of them, so that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Brandon. Next we have Sophia and after Sophia, Jared. Sophia.
Hi, um, so I'm, my name is Sophia Garcia Owens. I'm a student of NHS. I live in Newburgh. And I'm going to be reading a letter that I wrote earlier. I understand that NHS did not know or support the rally. That is not my issue. My issue is that there was a man carrying a gun on the student, on the school campus. It made me wonder if there was one man carrying a gun, there might be others doing the same. It made me scared. I do not hold NHS accountable or responsible for the man carrying the gun, but I do not feel that NHS responded in a manner that demonstrated the understanding that this was a very scary, this was very scary for some students. The focus seemed to me more on the rules being broken rather than the students' feelings and how they reacted. NHS has talked about how students should feel safe and that they care about other students' feelings and opinions. But the posts and emails from NHS did not demonstrate that to me. Other students and myself believe that the school should have responded differently, such as acknowledging and supporting the students' feelings of fear involving the gun. Stating what policy and rules is, is not an appropriate response students want to hear. We want to know that you hear our concerns and support us. And then this is a reason that specifically me and a lot of other students were scared by the gun. Although people claim that it was a concealed weapon, I am still hearing about a lot of school shootings in the past few years. I, just a lot of violence associated with guns, so it's not so much the gun itself, it's the violence that's associated with it. And I am still scared of a weapon, even if it's concealed, and I would rather not have to worry about any type of weapon if I'm ever at school.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, we have Jared and after Jared, we will have Aurelia and that will be our final comment or commenter, I should say.
Good evening. My name is Jared Jones. I'm a parent of a 2020 graduate, a 10th grader and a 7th grader. I want to thank you, Board of Directors, for your diligence and for your communication. Two of you have reached out to me after comments I've made in recent months. More importantly, I'm grateful to see progress on matters of policy. You've updated the code of conduct in ways that make good sense. You've initiated ad hoc committees on equity and on school start times, both of which have potential to improve students' experiences in our district. I recognize that the work you do to prepare for meetings and to remain engaged through them can be exhausting. I'm grateful for the energy and the thoughtfulness you bring to us. I believe we are headed in a good direction. I'm also grateful that our kids are doing their distance learning in smaller cohorts. The district could have tried many different models for CDL, but the cohort approach seems to me to be working pretty well. Finally, I want to thank NSD's staff, teachers, assistants, counselors, custodians, administrators, everyone, for what they're doing for all our kids. For people called to spend their days with students, the past two months probably have been the most challenging, frustrating and unrewarding of your careers. Working long past your contract hours, battling the limitations of Chromebooks and Google Meet, wondering whether you're making a difference, wishing you could see and hear and spend time with the people you are entrusted to educate, that is discouraging. The problem is not you, it's the pandemic. While we hope for better days to come, I want to express my gratitude for what you're doing right now. Your work does matter to my family and to hundreds of others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jared. And I think I could say thank you on behalf of the staff too. Okay, Aurelia is our last commenter for this evening.
I am looking through our participants and I don't see anyone with Aurelia's name or with the phone number provided. So Aurelia, if you are present, could you use the question and answer function and let me know what your name is so that I can promote you to a panelist?
No. I believe did the board get an email from Ms. Martinez prior to this?
I don't believe so.
Oh no, okay, sorry.
Okay, I think we did.
Yes, we did.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, that's okay.
Too many emails today.
There's a lot, okay. Well, I'm sorry she couldn't join us, but we did get the email, so we will, I'll review that. Okay, let's go ahead and move into board comments and I think it worked out pretty well last time when I kind of went around and we did a bit of a round robin. So if I call you and you don't have comments, that's okay. And if you do, of course, share them. Let's go ahead and start with Rebecca. Do you have any comments this evening?
I just want to thank all of those who spoke their, their, their truth and that we take each concern very seriously. And especially the students, we appreciate. It's not easy to speak in a Zoom meeting, especially to adults, but we appreciate your voice very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Bob, do you have any comments this evening?
I do, but before, do we have Aurelia? I see somebody with the name Gladys Remus 703.
But that's, that's one of, that's the other interpreter, Bob.
Oh, sorry, okay, getting used to the interpretation. Thank, thank you for being here. Yes, my board comments and I recently apologized privately to both Jen Schneider, the president of our teachers' union, as well as Sandy Byerly, the teacher or the president of our classified staff who are the teachers' aides, janitors and non-licensed teaching folks. I apologize to them privately. I don't want to do it publicly. As part of our board outreach, we formed a committee to review school start times. And I asked Greg in his role as board secretary to send out a email to all staff asking for volunteers to serve on that committee. And if they were interested to contact their union presidents and let them know. I didn't notify the two of them individually beforehand and let them know that this was coming. They were both very gracious about it, but I wanted to say that, you know, that was a misstep. And it stands out to me and it's important to me because we have worked very hard as a board to change the way we operate. You know, I've heard folks in the community say that they have a goal of blowing up the culture of the, the board. And if you come across one of those folks, just let them know that they're, they're a couple of years too late, that that work really began several years ago. And that work has been done by Inez Peña, Brandy Penner, Rebecca Pyros, Ron Mock, Lydia Cooler and myself. There were things that operationally that this board did when I came on that I was not comfortable with. And we've changed a lot of that and we've changed the openness that we have as a board. We've changed the transparency that we have aboard as a board and we've done it through love and kindness and always putting our students first. So I just wanted to again apologize to those folks and ask for everybody's patience as we work harder to be a more responsive and transparent board.
Thanks, Bob. Brian, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. One week from tonight, sovereignty will return to the hands of our citizens who will go to the polls to choose their next government. A brief survey of human history reveals such an act of self-government to be so rare, perhaps even unnatural, that event, that, an event, uh, an event that is certainly worthy of celebrating and cherishing. Indeed, before our country's founding in 1776, the phenomenon of self-government existed precisely nowhere else on planet Earth. This fact alone is worthy of reflection. Yet there are those who take that miracle of democratic republicanism for granted, such that they seek to undermine its very foundations. On Sunday, a group of our fellow citizens, organized by two local college students, gathered to express their support for their preferred candidate for the presidency by organizing a car parade. Despite the talk of guns that we have heard here tonight, to the best of my knowledge, there is no actual evidence of weapons being present that day. I first want to congratulate the two young people for their political activism, something that this body frequently claims to espouse. Being young people, perhaps they did not follow the proper permitting process, but their motives seem pure. And the event they organized was, in the end, a completely peaceful expression of political speech. That is certainly more than one could say for many of the political demonstrations we have seen around the country this year. What disturbs me far more than any transgression of our permitting process is the degree to which some members of the community have seemingly rushed to use the apparatus of government to silence those voices which, with which they disagree. Democracy is messy. It requires us to confront perspectives and ideas that sometimes make us uncomfortable. Discomfort, however, is no justification for suppressing the rights of others to freely express themselves in a peaceful manner. I would urge everyone to remember that when they undermine the right of others to speak, they undermine their own rights as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Ron, do you have any comments this evening? Okay. Uh, Dave, do you have any comments this evening? You're muted.
I was trying to copy Dr. Joe. Um, no, I was just gonna say a little bit, you know, kind of agree with a little bit of everything was said there, uh, with everybody. You know, don't know, didn't hear about it till we got, you know, started getting some, uh, emails, what happened on Sunday. Joe, Dr. Joe, I'd just like to say thank you for, you know, the long but pretty clear email to clear it all up. Uh, it, 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 I would like to know sometime, you know, maybe we can get a response back. About the weapons thing, that would be nice to know if that really took place. I think, uh, that always adds to, um, the fear, you know, that some of our kids could have if, if that was taking place. I, I do think that the, the response was, um, a bit uneven. You know, I think we have a sitting US president, whether we like him or not. We always do have a sitting president, by the way, and it seems about half the country agrees and half the country doesn't agree with whoever the president is at, at the particular time. And, um, I think for our young people's sake, a lot of our adults in our community, including us in the school district, uh, leaned pretty hard one way on this. And, um, I don't really think there's anything else that the district staff could have done. So I, I would say, uh, you know, good job as far as, um, how it was handled. I just think, uh, you know, we really don't have a lot, long ways, a lot ways to go. More than most of you, I've spent a bazillion Sundays at Newburgh High School. Um, and I've seen all kinds of weddings and birthday parties and, you know, uh, all kinds of stuff happen. We were part of a parade on Saturday for a birthday party for a 60-year-old that started at Jakewood Park with 25 cars. This stuff does happen. Um, if there were no weapons, I, I would like to say, I don't think we should have been talking about it. If there were weapons, then I think that's a discussion that we should have with our, our board and Dr. Joe. I don't want to see our kids scared in any way, shape or form. So I think that is something, Brandy, we need to bring back up maybe in another meeting, you know, to put on the agenda. If there were guns, uh, if there weren't, then I think we put a lot in there about something that, that, that didn't happen. I agree with Brian that these people have just as much right to, to say stuff. Especially now that we've seen so much going on, uh, right here in our own state, uh, that was violent. Last night, an app, an app came out. Don't know if you guys know this, but it could be far worse than what we, we saw on Saturday or Sunday. There's a, uh, there's a movement to identify people who did donate to a particular political party. And they've targeted those houses. And I'm hoping they don't do anything, uh, but that's right here in Newburgh, uh, four houses down from my house, six houses down from my house. Um, we're a diverse neighborhood. I mean, everybody votes different and that's fine. But I, I do feel like we were, um, pretty quick to come out with a lot of, uh, of things in there that, uh, I think we could have summed up that whole email in about, about two, two paragraphs. And then waited for all the real facts. If those weren't facts, I would like to know what the real facts were. But I still think, Dr. Joe, you did a good job with what you had to work with and, um, I know that's a long response, but, uh, some of the things Brandon said are true. Some of the things that Jared Jones said there were true. Some of the things Brian said were true. I hope we're all listening as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, Inez, do you have any comments this evening?
I do. And Greg, I do have them typed out, so I'll send them to you for the minutes. I struggled in figuring out what I wanted to say tonight. I've gone from one extreme to the other. I have so much to say that it could take up the entire meeting. And then I'm also at a loss of words and have nothing to say. However, I'm on this board for a reason, and that is to use my voice and elevate experiences similar to mine that will add to a more holistic education system. First of all, I want to apologize to everyone who has felt silenced, hurt, unsafe and unsupported. I too have felt this way in the last 72 hours. I'm embarrassed and ashamed, but hoping we can take this as a wake-up call and be better. I also want to take a moment and thank each of you who have made a comment tonight. I want to keep hearing from you. I want to thank each of the people who reached out to me via text or social media. Though I may not have been able to do much, I really appreciate receiving your messages. It showed me that you trust me as a leader in this district. I'm appalled by what happened on school grounds, not necessarily because it is a rally supporting a presidential candidate. I believe in our First Amendment. But because of the ideology the candidate represents. An ideology that says Mexicans are rapists, that black people are thugs and should be killed. The LGBTQ folks shouldn't have any rights and so many other outrageous and discriminatory things. To have a rally on school grounds directly contradicts our efforts to make this an equitable and more inclusive district. It makes our anti-racist resolution and our policies seem like a joke. Now I understand that this was not organized by the school district and that the district's intention is always to provide a safe learning environment for all. However, let us remember, the intention does not equal impact. What is the impact that of this rally on school grounds? A divided community, students fearful of their own school and peers. hateful messages, cyberbullying, the continued oppression of a BIPOC community and so much more. I too was upset at the initial short response from the, from the district. However, the last time I checked, that response generated over 811 comments. And I want to highlight some of those. So we get a pic, better picture of what the impact was. There are difficult comments that you're gonna hear, so I'm offering this as a trigger warning for the following. Racism, homophobia, xenophobia, self-harm, body shaming and murder. Here are some of the comments that were short. Beaners mad? Question mark. Speak English, lady. If I go to school for my forgotten water bottle, I'm gonna get kicked out before I can even say hi. I'm honestly not surprised being that as they, seeing as they let one of the seniors put MAGA on their parking painting last year and didn't bother to change it until people complained. As a Hispanic student that attends NHS and has felt and has dealt with racism on campus, it's like this one Trumpy coming up to me and yelling, "Kill all the Mexicans", to my face all over again and focus on that again. Call me sensitive, but in general, school gives so much, gives me so much anxiety to the point that I would get a panic attacks and had to be put on meds. Another one, I would just go back to Mexico. Turning off comments when we're all doing, well, when all we are doing is expressing ourselves, I'm suffering depression and anxiety and this does not help at all. Do you know how many people are scared about this? That they're, that they are killing themselves? This is a big mistake and we need answers ASAP. They brought a gun on school grounds. No one followed COVID guidelines. People feel unsafe at school now. What was the cost of this rally? What is the school planning to do in order to prevent things like this from occurring in the future? Because first of all, the majority of the crowd were not wearing masks, which is a direct violation of the Oregon statewide mandate. Not only was this inappropriate, but my main concern is that it was unsafe. Then a back and forth about body image. I hope you get sponsored by Weight Watchers. You want to degrade me in any way that you can, as if I'm less of a woman because of my weight and height. Another one. You who switched to a made-up gender because you couldn't deal with all your insecure, all your insecurities. You can't even choose which bathroom you want to use. I don't respect you or your pronouns. Show me your wrists. My wrists are irrelevant to the cause. Is that because they look like a barcode? Again, this is not about supporting a political candidate or party. It is about supporting his ideas, ideas which are discriminatory in nature and instigate hate. Which is against what the district has established that we believe in and we want our district to be. I'm angry. I'm disappointed. I would like to see consequences for the students who have promoted violence both on campus and on social media. I will leave you with this quote by James Baldwin. "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist."
Thank you, Inez. Um, I've got some brief comments to round out our board comments tonight. Uh, in preparing my comments for tonight, I was planning on centering them around the school bond, which is on the ballot. Passage of this bond is imperative to the continued success of our school district. While campaigning, I was surprised to find a few people reluctant to support a quote "political cause". And to be clear, public buildings are not political. These facilities are for our entire community. This impacts all of us. A thriving community has excellent schools. And the value that we place on educating our children directly reflects the value that we place on the sustainability and the future of our community. The future of our community is our students. These same students who are stepping up and demanding change to a system that has failed our BIPOC community for hundreds of years. Over the last two days, we've had several students volunteer for service on the board's Equity Committee. They've responded to the non-sanctioned event at the high school this weekend. We saw a huge amount of student engagement on social media and of course, the students who spoke at tonight's meeting. When I saw a crowd gathered at our high school, mostly without masks or social distancing, playing loud music and disrupting a sanctioned event with local students, I was confused and disappointed. When I asked, when I saw a flag with a politician's name raised on our flagpole, when I clearly saw a gun hanging from a man's belt and when I heard that students and families were intimidated and harassed as they tried to watch their kid's soccer game, I was livid. This transcends politics. This is about our kids. This is about, this was in the parking lot of the school that all of our kids will attend. There is no us and them. This is our community. Everyone is tired. We're all running on fumes and barreling towards uncertainty. But let's be certain of this tonight. This school board values you. Our parents, our staff and our students. We want to know you and we want to see you. It takes a community effort to evolve and grow and it takes the voices and actions of everyone to build a community that we can all be proud of. Continue to engage, continue to pay attention and help anywhere you can. Don't let the divisiveness silence you and don't let anger and fear drive you. Okay, next up, superintendent comments with Dr. Morlock.
I want Dave to recognize that I hit my mute button before I started talking tonight, so I appreciate the shout-out earlier, though. Well done. That's good. Okay. As you can imagine, it has been a busy couple of days working through the details of what happened at our high school campus this past Sunday. Often in a situation like this, uh, nobody will be happy about the decisions that are made and the way they are communicated. That is certainly the case as it stands right now. On Sunday afternoon, at about 1:30 while attending my own kid's soccer game in Gresham, I got a text from a district patron that a, uh, rally was starting to stage their event at the high school parking lot. At the same time, we had at least a soccer game and maybe even a baseball game in progress. We were not informed that the event would be happening beforehand and it appears the actual location was not disclosed until late Saturday night. I also received an email in the middle of that afternoon with more details and I spoke with high school administrators by phone, who had been alerted that it was happening. The rally participants left Newburgh High School about 45 minutes later, where it was stated they were headed towards McMinnville High School. The event appears to have been organized by two George Fox students, uh, and not students from Newburgh High School. The event was not approved by the school nor the district. We have reached out to George Fox University to follow up with the event organizers. It is important to remember that by living in the United States, we have the right to peaceably assemble and to the right of freedom of expression. The same is true for the National Quilters Association, all the way to the neo-Nazis. Those rights, however, do not extend the right to intimidate or to otherwise threaten others who may disagree with your viewpoint. In the planning and the execution of this event, organizers did not follow school district policies. And during the event, some state laws were broken. While we are public schools, we do have the ability to limit the use of both our facilities and grounds. And we do so with a process for the public to submit requests to use them. In any organized event, district policy states that a request must be submitted to the district for us to grant event organizers time and space to use said grounds or facilities. We do that, of course, to maintain our facilities and grounds to the best of our ability, to manage scheduling conflicts and to make sure that event requests do not contain things that may reflect poorly upon the district. Had the organizers made such a request, we would have denied it. The same would be true for any political organization regardless of side of issue, as we would not allow any of them. Last year, we denied the request of a Renaissance Fair group because they would be using medieval weapons in simulated fights and camping on our school grounds. There are lots of reasons why we deny requests of our facility use. Further, in the case of state laws being broken, members of the public with a concealed handgun license are permitted to carry their weapon on school grounds as long as they are concealed, although not inside buildings. We have policy in law that allows us to limit employees and contractors and students, uh, from carrying any weapon, but members of the public may do so. The same is not true for rifles, however, automatic or otherwise. We are processing both photographic and video evidence of holstered but visible handguns, as well as assault-style rifles, which were present in the open during the event. And we will forward all evidence to the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. Through the photos and the videos, we were also able to see very few people wearing masks and keeping a safe social distance during this global pandemic. We are still battling. This is both disappointing and maddening. The governor today announced an extension to the state of emergency due to COVID-19 through January 2nd, 2021, 2021. Uh, because we as a state have not been able to keep the virus from spreading and people are not doing their part to make the progress we must make so we can return to a more normal life and a more normal school year. I know that everyone is feeling the pressure of the upcoming election, but it is also important to remember we are all living under the same roof and must adhere to the same laws. and must adhere to the same laws and policies of others. These times are demanding in the sense that civility and subtlety are often lost in the noise that's swirling in social media. I am sorry, members of our community felt unsafe and unsupported by the district as that's not our intent. We have limits on what we can do and what we can restrict and that doesn't always align with our personal values or beliefs. Newburgh High School and district administrators took a lot of unfair beatings and attacks. Most of them came via our social media pages with racist remarks and hate-filled speech and untrue accusations. We did shut down the comments for most of our public facing social media for the next several days to restrict the oxygen and stop the terrible talk. We have also received a lot of email from people who are upset that we didn't shut down, do enough to shut down the rally as it was happening. As I said at the beginning of my remarks, I know most folks will be unhappy with the perceived actions or perceived inactions. We are all in a state of heightened awareness and the need for civility could not be greater than right now. I'm asking each of you to take a step back, consider your words and your actions and remember to take care of one another, whether you agree with their politics or not. I know that's a tall order, but we live in a democratic society with certain inalienable rights which extend to all. We must continue our work together in order to create and maintain a more perfect union. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? Okay, all those approved, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Okay, first up on reports and presentations tonight, we have Nikki with our monthly financials. Are you ready?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Let's see here. So this month I spent a little time talking about the SSF and where we are with enrollment. I know Greg is going to talk about things a little more in depth in a little bit. I was focusing more on the estimates and our current, our most recent count at October 15th. So looking at my report, we still don't have, and we won't have for a little while, our final numbers for 1920. Those, those numbers won't be final until after December after we get our audits done across the state. And then we'll have all of the final ADM numbers to find out where our floor will be. That will be, will be our floor for 2020, 21. But as I show here, we have quite, we have a little bit of wiggle room for 1920 because we based the budget on 5,656 on 9 ADM and our March numbers ended up around 5663. That won't be our final number because it looks at the ADM for the whole year. So there, there, we won't know where that will land, but it'll be somewhere in between those two numbers. So again, in the, in the next paragraph where I talk about 2021 numbers, as that drop in enrollment carries forward into next year, will be held harmless for the current year for 2021. But if our numbers stay lower going into the next fiscal year, we have the potential for quite a reduction in SSF, about $3 million. So in preparation for that, we'll be watching all the hiring, all the spending through this year and going into next year budgeting and also our staffing in relation to our enrollment. There is lots of things we don't know. We don't know if students will, our ADM will increase as we go throughout the year. If we start when we have limited in-person students coming back, if and when that comes back this year, whether our enrollment will increase. So there's a lot of moving pieces to these numbers. But anyway, I just wanted to put that out there so you're kind of aware of the big ticket items that we're looking at. The second part, I tried to answer a few questions that came up last month in regards to the PERS funding. So our new rates next year will be down quite a bit. And so I gave some quick numbers and that's an estimated analysis based on our current salaries. And that can move depending on which tier our employees are in. So if summer and op cert versus tier one, tier two, that will change those numbers in, in regards to our reduction. And so let's see, I don't know if there's more there. Going down to the financial reports, I have, this is just information through September 30. I did put in the encumbrances through October when I was printing the reports. So I tried to get some of the big ticket expense items in there like transportation and things like that. So it does look like any fund balance looks pretty good here, but we're still very early in the year. And we continue to buy more technology, more, you know, more of everything, curriculum, technology and everything. So that number will probably get eaten into a bit before we all send them this year. Let's see, are there any questions at this point? I know Ron had sent a couple of questions and I'm not sure if I really clarified those.
Well, yeah, you did confirm my estimate from what I could tell of, hard to know, but about $3 million in possible basis school fund. Right now, that's what it looked like. Is it, the other question is, is sort of, I'm not sure if, if I'm right about this in, in your report before you get to the table of all the accounts. You have a quick analysis of the, of that PERS change. And I was trying to estimate how much that would save us expenses next year and I came up with about 1.6 million. Is that, is that actual? I mean, and would that partly offset the 3 million?
Yes, yes, that would partly offset that. So that, that will help go towards that 3 million. The only thing we still have to be aware of, you know, this, this drop is a direct result of the redirect. And so as soon as the system is funded back at whatever level, that redirect will go away and those rates will come up.
Yeah. Postponing a cost, not actually saving a cost.
Right, right.
Budget year, they'll start to, they'll come back in. What we, what we're postponing will come back in and a little bit more.
Right, right.
Obviously, we can't do anything about, but for the short term, it has this one benefit. It'll help us up about half that other estimated loss, maybe. That's what it looks like now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I wanted to know and that's very helpful. Thank you.
Well, and something else that I think I put in the email back to that I forgot to mention was the difference, as we look at those estimates and the per student money that comes in, that comes from statewide, statewide numbers. So student population drops across the state, that per student amount will go, if it will go up if the population goes down and all of that. So all those, every little piece can tweak that revenue. So we have an estimate, but it's, it's very much a moving target when we're watching all this.
That does raise a question I, I didn't ask you and if you can't answer it right now, that's totally fair because I forgot to write it in my note. If every school district had the same drop proportionately as ours, we wouldn't experience any revenue loss, would we?
Correct. I mean, yeah, it would, it would lessen that because yeah, if all of us are dropping in the same level, in theory, that would be true. And we do know, we've heard across the state, a lot of the kindergarten numbers are down. That was a theme across the state. So we already know that that is probably a fair assumption in some ways that those numbers, you know, consistently dropped across the board. But where it ultimately lands, we don't know. And ODE did open up, we, we do collections estimating these numbers all the time, but they opened up an extra one because they wanted us to update our 2021 numbers so they can start looking at next year a lot sooner and start doing some projections. So we'll be going in and updating those with our best estimates to try to prepare for that upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Nikki regarding the PERS or the monthly financials? Okay, thank you, Nikki. Okay, next up, we have a bond update with Joe and Greg.
All right, thank you. We don't actually have a lot of updates to give you as we are approaching the time where the election will take place, the final election. Of course, Oregon is a mail-in or drop-off ballots. So that's all happening in the meantime. We have not done any more public talks. We've answered several emails coming in from folks clarifying some things. And I think Greg, unless there are other ones, I'd like to actually turn the balance of the time over to our PAC for their update.
Just quickly to make sure the board knows, we, the, we sent out another mailer this week so that folks should have received that in their homes. And there are going to be some informational, digital 30-second spots that will be going out in different places on social media for folks just to be able to see more about the bond. And as Joe said, not only emails, but also some phone calls that I've returned just from people in the community asking informational questions about the bond that I've been responding to this week as well.
Great, well, thank you. Okay, so if we could get Lydia and AJ promoted to panelists or however you work the magic behind the scenes, Greg. So Lydia and AJ will be giving the board an update on the PAC happenings. And go ahead ladies, whenever you're ready.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us back again. We have, since the last time we reported, done some door hangers at, as many as we could muster volunteers to do, getting them out around Newburgh and Dundee. And we put a few more larger signs up on some of the Austin industry properties for people to see as they drive by. We sent out our mailer as, from the PAC encouraging folks to vote yes. We sent those out to households with registered voters. And we just this weekend did a text banking campaign to encourage folks to vote yes who have not yet cast their ballot. And that, that pretty much I think is what we've been up to and, and moving forward. With such a short timeframe now, we're just.
We're focusing on reaching out via social media, encouraging folks to vote. We've got a big Facebook ad campaign going on this week. So we figure that can reach those voters who might not have remembered to vote.
Want to thank, uh oh, how long was I out for? Got it.
Kept it rolling, don't worry.
I just mentioned that we're doing.
I guess keep going because I have no idea what you said so far.
Yeah, no, it was just what we're doing this week, so it's all good. One thing that's been encouraging is on social media, I've seen in community groups, people educating other community members about the bond, what it covers, the rates, all of that. So the education piece worked, folks know, and they're sharing with others. So we're just hoping to get those last votes in.
Did you, so for upcoming, we're, we're really just focusing on our social media stuff. That's kind of what we're doing this last week, just to keep pushing out to get as many people as possible to see it and, and hopefully cast their votes in this last few days for the election. And we want, did you already thank our supporters, AJ?
I have not.
Okay, so we wanted to give a shout out to all of our many, many, you know, small time donors that we have that wanted to support the, the PAC and for people putting up signs at their business or home. And then our volunteers who did helped us with doing door hangers. And we also wanted to thank Brick Architecture, Austin Industries and Providence for their support and they really made it possible for us to do a lot of what we were able to do. Am I frozen again?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, okay.
It's frozen, but your, your voice was still coming. I just wanted to say, just point out, I finished the last of my door hangers on Saturday and everybody that I handed one to, because they're out in the front yard, almost all of them had already voted. I don't know about the people who were others. That was like a dozen people out of the hundred and some that I did on Saturday.
So, yeah, the voter turnout rate, the voter turnout rate at this point in an election period is unprecedented. So it's, it's fantastic how many people are casting their, their ballots already.
No, I haven't voted yet, so if you need, somebody needs to hand out door hangers in my house and try to talk.
I have, I have some still, I'll come put a stack.
Yeah, Ron left 150 on your bench. There's no excuse.
He gave me 150, so that's 250 to go there all of a sudden, so, yeah.
And I had a question, actually, I actually wanted to ask the Director Brown to, to Dave. I realized that you had missed that August 11th meeting when we put the, we voted for the resolution to put the bond on the, the ballot. And I realized I didn't know whether you were a yes or a no on that. And I knew your, your vote is personal, but your vote on the, I was curious as a board member, what your vote would have been if you had been in attendance to that meeting, if you would have voted yes or no to put the, the bond on the ballot.
You're muted, Dave.
You're muted.
Hey, I'm down. Bob, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a long answer, but I'll just give you the short version. I would have voted no. There's just too many things I didn't like about it, but yeah, that's my short answer for you.
Okay, are there any other questions or, I guess, questions? There's not really another category. Is there any other questions for Lydia or AJ?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank them for all their work. I really enjoyed going out and doing the door hangers, you know, get some exercise in. So thank you so much for all the work that you've put in. I know that it's challenging at times, so.
Thank you, yes.
100%, thank you. And, you know, I saw that we had Autumn Foster as an attendee. I'm not sure if she's still out there, but Autumn also played a huge role in the PAC with all of our marketing material and all of our social media range and really, really helped out on just getting that word out there. So thank you to Autumn, to AJ, to Lydia, I mean, to Bob, to Carr, to everybody. It's, it's certainly been a, a community effort and it still has a week to go. So thank you for your efforts. Okay, if there's no other questions, then we'll release you back to the public. Thank you for coming tonight, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our ad hoc committee updates. And so I was going to see if, let's see, Brian, Rebecca and Bob, if you would like to give an update first regarding happenings on the Start Time Committee.
Yeah, gladly. As I mentioned, we're in the recruitment phase. We've sent out emails to all the staff and Greg also sent out one to the parent groups asking for volunteers. So, you know, we, we need to meet again as a committee, start to review those. You know, we're on a pretty tight timeline to get this in the timeframe that the, the board is looking for. So we'll be meeting, we haven't set a time, but in fairly short order to get that, so they can have several meetings during November and December to, to review that. So if anybody is listening and is still interested in volunteering, you know, contact a union president, if you're in the unions, feel free to contact any of the three members of that committee. And we will be, we will be finalizing that in fairly short order.
Great. Is there, are there any questions for the Start Time Committee? Nope, okay, well, thank you. Look forward to next month's update. Okay, so Ronnie, Inez and I met in our weekly equity committee and it was decided that Ron was going to give this month's update, so go ahead, Ron.
It's a long one. It's a long one. We are in the recruiting phase as well. We've, excuse me, we're shooting at probably around 12 members. And we have done some publicity to the students at the high school, trying to get a couple of high school students on the, on the committee. And to the staff and the faculty at the, in the district at large. And reaching out to find maybe community members and parents. So the roughly, roughly something like three board members, let me see if I got that right, three board members, two students, and the other seven, I think are, were they three staff members and four community members? I think something like that is what we were looking at. Maybe some people that have overlaps and be in more than one category. So right now we're gathering names. We've had a lot of emails today, which I missed because I was out of email range all afternoon. And so I haven't gone through them to see who they are, but they look like they might be students that look mostly. I think there's at least a couple of community members as well.
Yeah, a lot of student interest, which is good.
And a couple of staff members as well, yeah. So we extended, or we've left that window of applicants open through, I believe, the 5th of November, right? And the 6th will be meeting to kind of go over that and see what our, our next steps are going forward.
I see my report was insufficient.
Just had that to add. That's okay. It's a group effort. All right.
Right. I'm eliciting activity from you. That's my leadership form.
Now I know it. All right, are there any questions for the Equity Committee? No? Okay, let's move on to our enrollment report. Greg, are you ready?
Yes.
Awesome.
Get this screen up here. So that folks can see it. All right, is that visible to everybody? All right. So enrollment analysis for 2020 so far, what we'll be covering tonight are, is where our enrollment is as of October 1st, which is our first day that we report to the state, the official results of enrollment. We'll look just really briefly at school capacity, which in comprehensive distance learning isn't a huge issue. Some comparisons with other districts, some comparison to Portland State enrollment projections, and trying to ask that question of why have students left since we have a lower enrollment? Here is a slide that shows the district enrollment for beginning on October 1st. And you can see over the last two years and the change that you will notice is very different at each school. And one of the things that I noticed in just looking at that is that some of our schools with more underserved populations who perhaps don't have as many options for going somewhere else have seen less of a decline than schools where they have other options that they can pursue. And so again, issues of equity come up even in times like this of recognizing this is why we need to keep making sure that all of our provisions are meeting the needs of all of our students as we move forward. So you can see that we are down 378 students from last year at this same time. And that that is an 8% decline, 7.8%, which we'll see more detailed in just a moment. That is obviously very significant. And one of the things that I did for any of you who may have compared to last year's report is I actually redid the numbers for 2018 and 2019 to separate out COA. Because in previous years, those numbers have been so small, they've just been integrated into the schools where we track them in synergy. So I've pulled those out for 2018 and 19 and for this year at the bottom. So you can see the, the increase that we have both at Catalyst and COA as a result of people making different choices than the comprehensive distance learning. Here is where we are with actual versus projected enrollment over the last several years. This is an important slide several years ago as we tried to, wanted to monitor how we were doing in projecting enrollment. And obviously, we did not do well at all this year. And that is entirely due to the issues of the pandemic. The number there of 4,775 that we projected for this coming year began at the very beginning of our budgeting process, which was in February of last year before COVID hit. And so while that looks very damaging, there is, there are reasons for that that were outside of the realm. When you look at the actual just enrollment over a long period of time going back 20 years, you can see the ebbs and flows of enrollment in our district with, but obviously this year is something we have not seen before. And you can see that very visually represented in this slide. So how does this decline compare to other school districts? That was one of the questions that I heard from board members before we had this report. So as stated, we are a 7.8% decline with 378 less students. And I contacted local districts to get an idea of what their numbers were. A couple of them did not respond. The one I was most hoping to have in was Sherwood, but they were not able to get numbers for me. So I'm sorry that I don't have that comparison. But you can see we are on the upper end of that spectrum, but not out of line with other things that are there. So other districts are also experiencing this kind of decline as we are as well. Again, school capacity, just a reminder to us as we are, what we've been stating with the bond, that there is not a need in our projections for needing to increase capacity of our buildings, that even if we were in school, we have plenty of room within our schools as we move forward. So what are the major factors that are affecting enrollment? As was already mentioned, small kindergarten class, we have 82 less kindergartners than we did last year. And one of the ways that affects our bottom line is that the incoming kindergarten class is 108 students less than the graduating class of 2020. So the kindergarten alone has a 108 student difference for our bottom line of the district. When we look at that kind of on a school-by-school basis, you also see a very different approach in each one of the schools. So this first part of the chart, which is circled in yellow here, we're looking at just the kindergarten change at each school from last year to this year. And you can see that Mabel Rush only lost 5% of their students versus Ewing Young, who lost 53%. So it's very different at the different schools as far as who started kindergarten. And then the second one, or the second part of the circle, the one on the right, was to try and take a look at what was the total change in enrollment of that, of each of those schools? And what percentage of the total change was the kindergarten loss? And so again, what you see something with Mabel Rush and Joanne Austin, it was a very small percentage of kindergarten affected the total loss. Whereas at a school like Ewing Young, that was actually one of their largest impacts. So one of the things to look at here is there are a lot of factors why a school total may have gone down. They could have not started in kindergarten. That's what this slide is measuring. They could have transferred to another online school or another district or homeschool. That we will look at later. The other one that I did not have time to flesh out on a school-by-school basis is exactly how many from each grade at each school went into COA, which would be a loss to that particular school, but not a loss to the district. And so some of the reasons why you can see the overall percentage of kindergartners, kindergarten only affected 18% when you look at the whole pattern, which tells us, since there are six grades in K through five, it tells us that there were also significant loss in the other grades. Again, when you look very different at each different school, and like I said, I apologize, we did not have time to, we didn't have time, I didn't have time to analyze all of those numbers. But clearly what it means is that some of the older grades went to COA or to other places at a higher level at some schools than others. Some of the other major factors, which I already mentioned, they could have transferred on other online charters. We have 132 of those from June 1st to October 1st of this year. One of the things that I want to remind the board, as I do it each time this year, is that we do a transfers report in February or March each year. And that's where we do a full and complete analysis that gives us an apples-to-apples comparison. So this number is pulled out, this is an accurate number from what's happened to June. But there's really no way to compare how we are doing compared to last year until we get the full year in place and have that report in February or March or whenever that one comes. We have transfers to and from other districts, and we right now have a net loss of 45. That means that while we did have dozens come into our district, the amount going out was 45 more than those coming in. And we have a significant increase in homeschoolers, 28 versus 2 who let us know that last year. So again, this doesn't account for everything and didn't have time to, at this point in the year, to look at all of the analysis, but that does account for 311 of the 375 loss. So how do the different dynamics that we're looking at specifically compare to other districts? So one of the things we looked at is kindergarten percentage. And what you can see here is that we are not the lowest, but on the lower end of kindergartners this year compared to last year. Another way to say that is we were hit more by kindergartners not coming back to school than some of the other districts. But you can see that even in the best-case scenario of Hillsboro, there still was a significant decline. So across the state, we are seeing parents choose to keep their kindergartners at home this year. When you go to this next slide and look at transfers as a percentage of enrollment, this is actually one where we are performing better compared to other districts. We are on the lower end of transfer loss as percentage of enrollment compared to some of the other districts. So again, this is just trying to give you an idea, as you asked, of how our numbers look to the best of our ability at this time compared to other districts. Then we want to just do a little bit of brief work comparing to the March 2020 PSU enrollment study. The last two years of our data, we have been tracking near or below the low projection of the PSU study. Those obviously were from the 2017 PSU study because the 2020 study obviously didn't go backwards in time. Birth rates are predicted to continue a decline for two more years. So that will also affect our kindergarten enrollment as we move forward. And distance learning is clearly dramatically impacting projections. So this just shows the low series of projections compared to the actuals for what we have it. The asterisk for last year is that that projection came from the 2017 study. And then you see our actual on the side. And then the projections below that are from the 2020 study. So you can see before the pandemic happened, the PSU study was still predicting on the low series slight declines in the years ahead, which primarily reflects the birth rate decline in our county. So we are taking that into, as a factor to consider as we move forward with our budgeting. Here's that pull from the study that looked at the decline in birth rates. You can see with the circle there where birth rates still have gone down over the last three years. Those kids have not yet come into our kindergarten classes. This is the chart where they put all that together, where they try to line up birth rates from five years before to them what they project for kindergarten coming in. So you can see, you can see the line still dipping down in the next couple of years before we see slight increases starting to come in the projection from our kindergarten classes. One thing that may throw that off, we have no way of knowing until next year actually happens. But since we are 73 down this year from where we were last year, there is the theoretical possibility that those 73 could enroll next year, joining those who are predicted. So we could have, you know, as many as a prediction of 408 kindergartners next year. We'll just have to watch that. And a lot of that will depend on when we are able to get back to in-person learning. And it's probably a marker for us to do as we have always done, to work really hard on kindergarten pre-registration in April so that we have plenty of time to adjust our staffing for whoever is enrolling in kindergarten next year. What do we know about students who did not return? We keep a district-wide spreadsheet over the last several years. We ask every family that leaves why they left. Not all of them tell us, that's their right to tell us, but for those who do, we track that on a district-wide spreadsheet. And what we have are all of the responses here. So I did not hide any responses. I gave you every responses of reasons that were given to us by people. So the main reason that people give us for leaving the district are they choose the selection of family convenience. And 21 students transferred out of our district for reasons of family convenience. As I mentioned before, we also have people transferring into our district and 12 people coming into our district gave that same reason. People transfer out of our district because of a program in another district. That was seven people. But you'll notice that we have 25 coming into our district because of a program that they prefer here. There's a lumped-together thing of social, emotional reasons or smaller school, because that often the case, we often hear from transfers that it's better for this emotional health of my, of my student to be in a smaller school. Three of them gave that reason for going out, four for coming in. Other was three people. Two people said they were unhappy with NSD and one was for COVID. So that's the, what we have on enrollment and I am open for any questions that you have.
Hey Greg.
Go ahead, Greg.
Hey Greg, so I mean, like this year though, I mean, the numbers are so crazy because of COVID. So I mean, a lot of, a lot of this stuff will come back to us, won't it? You know, once we kind of get back to, you know, some semblance of regular school.
That is certainly our hope. We have no way of knowing for sure how families are going to choose or what's going to go on with that process. But given the fact that across the state, it appears like districts are seeing this drop in enrollment, we are assuming that at least some portion of those will come back, yes.
Seems like a lot of the people you talked to, it's, it's more of like they just can't quite handle the online. So they're just kind of pulling back for now and kind of, kind of waiting to see how it all shakes out, you know, so they can kind of get back in the, in the school race. And that's what I hear out there.
Wait, wait, there's an option of pulling back? Because I've got three kids that I would like to.
Yeah, you drop your kids off, there's some place downtown Newburgh and it's free. You just go down and you go to Coffee College all day long, so.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Dave. Sorry, Bob.
No, that's okay. Greg, I just wanted to, I didn't have a question, but wanted to thank you again for this report. This is something you've been working on for several years. You know, three years and, and ago and back, we did not do such a good job in tracking this data the way we do now. And we were, we were back on our heels to answer questions when we had a significant drop. We're not in that position any longer. We have much better data and we're starting now to get several years of data to be able to track trends, to really be forward-looking at how we look at enrollment. And I know a lot of people go into the work to get this done, but you're the smiling face every year. And I really want to thank you for this presentation getting better and better every year and being a better source of information for us each year.
You're welcome.
I second that.
I'd like to, and it too, I guess I'm third now though. And also I want to point out that I don't know, as you mentioned, we don't know. I don't think anybody knows exactly what the bounce back will look like and how much of the kinds of changes we're seeing now will be permanent or ongoing. But if we, if we didn't have the data that you've provided and that maybe even some more that's still on that spreadsheet, it would be hard for us to understand what's happening next year. And I have some hope that we'll be able to track trends. For example, you pointed out, which I didn't catch, that maybe there is some sort of inferential evidence, I don't know if it's conclusive, but inferential evidence that perhaps higher-income people are finding more options and going and seizing those. And if they don't come back, that will be, if some of them, if we have a significant number of those that don't come back, we'll have, that will change our population. My ideal, of course, is to have the public schools represent the entire population, at least not every student necessarily, but not be, not, not be differentiated by those, those differences as much as possible. That may not occur.
I guess if I can just interject, if I would just interject, I would use the language of, you said evidence, I don't, I don't think it's evidence. I think it's hypothesis on my part. And it's just, it's my own hypothesis that I will own. I'm just looking at the numbers of which schools declined more. And, and that was my own personal hypothesis. And there's, may interpret the data differently.
So the inferential evidence is my word, way I was trying to say the same thing. It's not hard evidence, but there's a possible inference. I was going to say something else, I'm sorry.
Sorry, my bad.
No, it's okay. Anyway, this data will help us understand this next year, depending on what happens. I appreciate it. Anyway, this data will help us understand this next year, depending on what happens. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions for Greg regarding enrollment?
Greg, I want to thank you for all the work, also all the secretaries who, who do the tough questioning of the, the people who are transferring and appreciate all the, the data. It, it, hard data helps with rumors, helps, help that we just don't hear hearsay, but we have hard data to, to show what's actually happening in the school. Thank you so much for all the hard work.
Yes, you're absolutely right to highlight secretaries. Each school secretary is the one who gets the data onto the spreadsheet. Shanna Andries is the one who does all of the work on our transfers and keeps that in a, in our spreadsheet that's easy to access. And Tanya Penninger is the one who organizes the whole enrollment issue and does the, does the counting and the reconciling with the state. So you are, you're right to highlight a lot of people involved in the district who are doing this work.
Excellent. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Greg and team, for your work on this. Okay, we got a couple-minute break here. Let's see, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but let's go ahead and just take a five-minute break and meet back at eight thirty-five. Just you and me, Rebecca. Oh, oh, here comes Joe. Okay, people are going to start popping in. Ron, you're muted.
I was telling you, I didn't want you to have to watch me chew, so I'm leaving my video.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, wait for the last couple of stragglers to come in here. Greg, I didn't realize that you're also now giving us the next report as we come back from break two, so I hope you had a nice break.
Thank you.
Not quite. We've got Dave, Inez, and Ron to finish chewing and then we'll get started.
Brandy?
Yeah.
Could you tell me how many people are in attendance?
Um, let's see, right now, we have sixteen. It was up to closer to.
It was at about, yeah, thirty-five or thirty-eight, I think, is the biggest that I saw.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, let's give Dave another second here. I think it's pretty normal to lose some people after the break, but that's understandable.
Just so you know, the Dodgers are head three to one in the top of the ninth inning.
Is that what the phone was?
Yeah, I was trying to show it to you, but it doesn't show up. I have not been watching it all this time. I just spent my break catching up.
Thank you for clarifying. All right, let's get started and hope Dave joins us again soon. All right, back in order. So next we have Greg with our Division twenty-two assurances.
Yes, this will be a relatively short report, but just so that everybody is on the same page of what this is about. There is a, an OAR five-eight-one-zero-two-two-dash-one-zero-three, or actually two-three-zero-five. And that twenty-two in the middle is where we get this Division twenty-two place. And what that has is statutes from the legislature letting us know what each school needs to prove compliance on in various categories. Then in the, in the full statute, there are fifty-some requirements that we report on each year. Because of the pandemic last year and students not being in buildings and not having various assessments in the spring, the state established a new rule in effect just for this year. So reporting on the last school year, twenty nineteen, twenty, that has seventeen standards that they established in this new standard that we are to report on. And we're supposed to give that report in a public board meeting like this. And after you receive that report as a board, we then post that on our website. And this year, we are in compliance with every one of the requirements. And in the board packet, it outlines what each one of those are and how we cover those. But our district is in full compliance with every one of the things required in Division twenty-two. We did not take the time to go through all of the other standards to see how we would have been in regard to if it had not been a COVID year. But last year, we were only out of compliance with our purchasing of curriculum. And while we would still not be in compliance, we are well on the way toward moving toward that. We've already filed a plan with ODE and have done a significant amount of curriculum work over this past year in math. And we are moving in the right direction with that one. We don't have any way of knowing next year when we are back what, what the legislature will do, if they will have us back to the old standards, some other modified standard, but we are clearly in compliance this year.
Okay, are there any questions for Greg? No, all right, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors acknowledged receipt of the report on Division twenty-two compliance for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
I will second.
Okay, with the motion and second, is there a discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Greg. Okay. Let's see, next up, we have our board professional development topics. So I kind of went through, Greg sent me the proposed agendas for the coming year as far as when certain reports are. I kind of went through and, and looked at where some of them might line up. Some of them looks like maybe don't line up, so we can have a discussion around those. But I'm just going to kind of go through and tell you by each individual board member, kind of what I, my thoughts are. And if you don't agree with it or you'd like to see something different, just let me know. Okay, Bob, yours, your area of professional development was curriculum adoption, wanting to know more about that. On February ninth, we traditionally have our teaching and learning report. That could be an area for it. That also would give enough time for you to communicate with staff a little bit more on what you'd like to dive into with that. Do you have any thoughts around that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that sounds like a reasonable tie-in to put it in with the teaching and learning report. You know, I'll kind, I'll leave it to you and the rest of the board, if we want to see that as something separate that we talk about as an agenda item or a work session. But yeah, it ties in with, you know, what Greg was talking about with the Division twenty-two. It's, like I said before, as, as a board member, it's an area where I have not, I don't feel like I have paid enough attention to. I don't know it as well as I want to, so I want to know, I want to know more thoroughly where we're at, what, what the current status is, what our, what our plans are. So if that fits in, I don't know what Derek usually gives that teaching and learning report. You know, I don't know if that would be too time-consuming to, to include in there. But I think that's a, particularly since we're currently out of compliance, that's an important topic to devote some time to.
It could also be a work session prior to that meeting as well. Are there any thoughts from the board on that?
This is for our education, so it doesn't have to tie into the actual staff's calendar as to when they do things. But I'm wondering from Joe's perspective, or I don't know if Derek's on, he should be on, I suppose, whether there's a time when this would be sort of a more natural, they're already thinking about it and it's not that much of an addition to, to an orientation for the board. And if that's the case, that would be the only thing that would make me want to do it at a different time. Otherwise, February is fine. So I don't know if Derek or Joe has something they want to say about that.
I'll jump in, Joe. We can have that conversation anytime you'd like. It doesn't have to, we don't have to wait till February for the teaching and learning update. If you'd like to have that conversation sooner, I can pull together some information for you and kind of walk you through what our current status looks like and, and the general process we're hoping to use over the course of the next few years to try to catch back up in all the content areas.
But there's not a season of the year where this is just a more natural thing. It could be any time as far as you're concerned. And February is fine with me.
I was, when I was looking at these, I was, I was trying to kind of spread them out a little bit. I know everybody's a little overwhelmed at this point in time. And maybe, maybe by February, we won't be, right? We can always be optimistic. But that was my thought, but yes, open to doing them whenever the board finds they would like to hear about it. Okay. Can we pencil in a work session before that February ninth board meeting to discuss curriculum? Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, okay, let's do it. Let's see, next up, I had Ron. You wanted to dive deeper into the financial world of school boardsmanship. I was thinking maybe a work session January twenty-sixth, that's the, the end of the month, so we get our normal monthly financial report. And that's also when we usually get our audit report according to our historical data. I would propose a work session before that to kind of dive deeper into any questions or specifics. What are your thoughts?
You asking me? Yeah, that's a, the tying it to the presentation, the audit report is good. I don't know that I'm expecting to be suddenly smarter about this at the, at our workshop. But if, if there was something about it that would help us prepare to look at the audit, it might be better to do it the week, the meeting before. I don't know if that's, I don't know what to, I actually don't know exactly what to expect here. I've been, for not, almost nine years now, I've been kind of working off the seat of my pants and my general understanding of spreadsheets, I guess, and Billy do some math. But I don't feel like I've ever been confident that I know exactly, I don't have to know exactly what's happening, but that I know that there's no problems lurking underneath the numbers. And we, in my time, have been surprised several times. And some of those, I don't think we could have done anything about, but I don't know. So doing it context can, at the same time as the audit is a good thematically, but it wouldn't help me prepare to look at the audit. So I might kind of like it a little before the audit. I don't know. I keep saying, I don't know, and that's kind of the theme here.
How about this? And the same for Bob, too, and I'm just thinking of this as we're going through. I think it could be appropriate when we, it's clear that there's, you know, Ron, you have questions that are more directed into Nikki's world, right? And so I think it would be appropriate for you to work with Nikki and Joe and I with your questions to kind of help sort of put some boundaries or frames around what you would like to hear. So it's not just a sort of nebulous idea. And same with you, Bob, too, about the curriculum.
So my main concern is that I don't feel like the board can generally be down in the weeds too far. I don't really want to look at whether Joe's buying the cheapest candy or not for his dish. But, but on the other hand, the board is responsible and when there's a mess. And, and when we can't see the mess coming or can't do anything about it, that just makes me very nervous. So I want to know how to see messes coming, if it's possible at the board level. And I guess that would be nicer to be done before the audit rather than after. But it's not, it's not, I don't know that it's crucial it has been done before.
So that really ties in nicely to Brian. Brian, yours was wanting to know more about PERS and how we're sort of approaching this, you know, potential balloon issue that we have coming. Would you be comfortable putting that in a work session with the financial questions that Ron has? Or are you looking for a specific work session, maybe just around the PERS question?
No, I'd, I'd be fine pairing those two up.
Okay, so then I'm going to say, Brian.
I would recommend not pairing them up because the first thing is its own baby and it's very complicated. And it does, we have to pay attention to it, but it's a different question because it's not really our internal decision-making dynamics and whether we're keeping the right record. I don't know whether we've got the proper safety things in place. So I would recommend not putting one the same one. We could do a whole thing on PERS and still not understand what we're done unless we're careful.
Well, same with the financial, yeah, it's all. Nikki, if you're still in, in hearing range, is there any specific season or time of year that it would be more beneficial to learn more about the PERS situation? I'm assuming not, but I'd like you to chime in, or Joe, if there is.
Really, in regards to the PERS, we get the information, the majority of the information when the rates are reset. So that was kind of the stuff I put out now. But there are several people with some expertise in that area that have always offered to have specific conversations, you know, folks that are really in that system and work with it. You know, one, one person, Carol Samuels, works for Piper Jeffrey, but she works with PERS so much, she has really good insights, really good explaining how it works as well. So yeah, that can really happen anytime. So yeah, that can really happen anytime. And then the financial stuff, yeah, once we have a better idea of kind of the specifics and everything. Yeah, we can, we can get together and figure out what to address specifically. And the auditors are always welcome, I mean, always say they, they're come and talk to you and explain the audit in you know, more detail, particularly to like the finance committee in a smaller group or a work session, but they're really willing to do any of that stuff on an education piece, and they might have more insight as to they might have more suggestions as to what to ask for and what to look for and those sorts of things as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Brandy, it might be helpful, you know, not to require, but for those two financial sessions, just to alert our members of the budget committee that folks who are on that committee, they might have deeper questions, and I think could get a lot out of both those discussions. So just an email out to them, like, hey, this is, this is coming up, and we invite you to come and observe while we have this work session.
I think that's a great suggestion, and we could also do it before, you know, or kind of in the ramp up to budget season as well, yeah. Brian, are you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Inez, implicit bias training, I was thinking this could be a great opportunity for an outside facilitator. We don't, this is one of the ones that kind of didn't naturally fit into, you know, any reports or anything like that that we get.
To what we're living, so.
Oh, hundred percent, hundred percent. So would you be comfortable working with Ron and I to maybe, I guess my first resource would be to contact OSBA, but I don't know if there's other resources that people have in mind, but maybe the three of us could chat about that and and get a facilitator for that and get that on the calendar.
Absolutely.
Okay, you comfortable with that? Okay. Rebecca, yours was about enrollment, and I was looking and I was like, shoot, that would have been great for tonight with the enrollment report, but of course, it was too fast. Is there? Or do you still have additional professional development questions around that after tonight's report? And kind of what would you like to see? You muted. There we go, perfect.
No, I felt, I felt the the presentation tonight helped quite a bit, and I was reminded that, that we do have these presentations. And then with the, with the discussion of the transfer report that Greg mentioned. I, I would feel that, that, that does it.
Okay. Well, just keep communication open if something comes up.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Okay, Dave, my notes said you were interested in knowing more about the staff experience. And I kind of want to know how you might want to perceive with that. Do you want to do, kind of, what are you envisioning, like listening sessions with staff regarding policy and budget? You know. I guess I'm leaning it up to you to kind of help me understand that one a little bit more. Oh, and you're muted too.
I think, uh been there for a long time, you know, hear every side of it, you know, from good days, bad days. I, I think for me, it's like I'm not on the budget committee and I'm not on the, the equity committee, so I'd like to be involved in getting out and yeah, you know, sit down with the staff, town hall, sitting sessions, you know, however we can work that out, and I think like what Ron says, kind of the, the I, I like how he says that, I think we just have to know as a board. It's, it's not a it's not a anything other than, I just think as a board, we have to know some of these things, so if we do have a concern within the board level, we can bring it to Joe, but if we don't know, then we just don't know. And good or bad, I think, you know, I mean, it's not, it doesn't have to always be negative, it could be something that we're doing really good, that staff would just jump all over and say stuff, and I think that, you know, as a board, we need to hear that, and the district staff needs to hear that, and if, if you're sitting in front of your supervisor, it's pretty hard to sometimes speak up. And so I would like to be part of that. I don't mind taking the time to get out there and and sit down with staff, however, we can work that out, that would be great. I think that would be a big boy, not just teachers too, but ed assistants.
Sure, I will say you are on the budget committee, because all of the board members are on the budget committee, so. But, okay, so would you be comfortable working with, let's see, Ron, Joe and I to kind of help again, sort of define this and figure out sort of what the role of that board-staff relationship is, and then we can kind of move forward from there?
You bet.
That's good, okay, cool. Okay, and then me, mine was working on specifically getting an equity lens that we can use for board decisions and policymaking, and I think again, this is an opportunity for an outside facilitator to help us out with that. I don't know if there's thoughts from the board around that.
Well, we've been talking, I think, at least since the first year I was on the board about equity lens and that we might already have one. I don't know that I've ever really understood it. So, because I, I don't, and this came up a couple of meetings ago, I think, so certainly, we, we should, I think as a board, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm just the only one that's clueless on this, but if I'm not, even if I am you could use it, it instruct me. We, I could certainly use a refresher on what that's about and how it works and what ours looks like, if we don't, if we have one, and if we don't have one how to get one. Or even if we do have one, whether it's up to date. So. Yeah, I guess I said this just to say, I think that equity lens has been something we've been talking about for years here. Oh, I can't point to it. I can't say there's the equity lens, I can see it.
I was gonna say, I think it's something that would tie in well with the committee, the inclusion committee, and putting a definition on equity lens, so that it's not a buzzword, but it's actually a tool that we can point to that we have and how we use it, you know, certainly, just a gut level, yeah, it sounds like a great idea. But I would be hard put to define what it was, and I think just that process of defining what it is and then actually putting it into place would be, would be, excuse me, very helpful.
Is the board comfortable with, let's see, Ron, Inez and I as the equity committee kind of defining this and deciding on best moves forward? Are Ron and Inez comfortable with this? I should have asked that before I volunteered, everybody, I'm sorry.
I am the vice chair, and I, and so I cannot object when you put me on these little committees. And I'm not objecting, I'm just pointing out the third one of these now. But you're all of them too, so.
I mean, I think it's part of what the committee's job will be to figure out these seek these opportunities either outside or inside and figure it out. So, yeah.
If we're gonna do it to me as an equity committee, know that this is part of what we're doing, and actually, it's tied to what we need, this part here is really board work, I'm not sure, I guess the rest of the committee might help us with this, but once we get it going. But as far as scheduling it and figuring out how to work on it, the three of us that are on the equity committee from the board would make a natural subgroup to deal with that.
Yeah.
Brandy, how does that work moving forward? I mean, so the committee brings back recommendations to the board?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a really good question, that the equity committee hasn't formed yet to decide, we've really been trying to be very cautious in, with Ron and Inez and I being very cautious in forming any kind of direction or charter prior to the committee actually being formed, so I hope so, I hope that that's where it leads, that this committee could bring you know, certain voices to the board, could bring recommendations, could bring you know, various education and professional development opportunities, but we've been, we're trying to be very conscious about not assigning sort of a charter tasks to it yet.
Say, you know, one thing which I've been real adamant on as we create these committees, that, you know, they are created by and report back to the board, they, they aren't able to, you know, speak for the board, because we are the elected officials. They're gonna come back to us with recommendations, and then we'll decide, you know, where we take that recommendation. You know, just like with the, the school start times, I've been clear all along, I, I, I'm a hundred percent for it, I, I really want to see it happen. But this committee that we're creating is not a rubber stamp committee that's gonna just do what we tell them to do. We're, we're gonna actually look at all sides of the issue, and that's what we're gonna ask of all committees, whether it's our equity or any ad hoc committee that we create. You know, it, it gets at that transparency and that openness to the community that we've been working on for the past three years.
Hey, Brandy.
Yep, go ahead, Dave.
I think on, on this one here, it's like, you know, I appreciate people just wanting to volunteer and and work on those, I guess for me, it's like this might be the most important thing we do, you know, say in the next twelve months. That definition's pretty it's gonna have to reflect Newburgh, it just can't reflect a board member or a couple of board members or whatever, it's gonna have to reflect our whole community.
Do you mean the, like, the makeup of the committee, or what do you mean?
No, I think when we get down to like how we're gonna move forward with this, you know, I mean, it's like, the, the guy that called in earlier, and I think his name is Brandon. You know, I mean, he didn't call in the same comments that other people called in. But, but I know as a board, we look at every single person as important. That's all I'm saying, I think we just have to make sure as we're moving forward that the districts we're really looking at this thing as a, a, a strong thing for Newburgh, not not political, not our personal feelings.
Yeah, certainly. Okay, so I think we've got a bit of a roadmap developing here regarding the professional development. Is everybody comfortable that their topic is getting service? Okay, again, keep communication open, so if you think of something, or, you know, as we're going on with the year, just let me know. Any other thoughts or questions around that? Oh, just a second, Rebecca, you're muted. Go ahead.
I, when are we going to be doing the board evaluation process? That, that's one thing that, that I forgot to mention last time.
Yep, thank you. We usually do it, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we usually do it sort of March-ish? Around March? Anyone?
No, I believe last year was the first time we did it, and we did it in the fall. She's referring to the OSBA survey.
Yeah.
For the board of by.
Yeah, that, that was, last year was the first time we did it, and I want to say that was like November, December, we did it. Don't have a track record yet, we don't have a pattern, so really, any times as good as the, as another, just fitting it in when there's time to devote to it.
I'd say the only thing that we need to do is get it done before we do our goal setting right after our superintendent evaluation, it has to be done before then, could be done anytime before then, I guess. But we don't want to be doing the goal setting and then evaluate the board. So, so December December would be great, maybe not at the same time as as Joe's evaluation, just to keep it straight in our heads what we're doing.
Yeah, his evaluation will be later on in the spring, right? Okay, so December-ish?
Yeah, December-ish, because it keeps it clear, we might start his in January and do it February.
Okay. Okay. I will reach out to OSBA and see if we can schedule something in that timeframe. Any other thoughts or questions around professional development? Okay. All right, last item on the agenda tonight is our discussion of in-person board meetings, so go for it, what are some thoughts, where's the board on in-person, in-person board meetings? You know, I'll start calling on you individually if I need to, so.
I guess my question is, is we have the ability with our room and the way the guidelines are from the governor down to, to be safe about this. And, you know, moving forward, you know, having our district move forward, and we can still do Zoom call-ins or whatever for people, so we limit the size down there, we can go ten, fifteen feet, we can wear masks, I, I just think that we there's so much going on, we have such an important year, you know, we have families scrambling, struggling, we gotta I think sometimes we get what gets lost in the Zoom meetings is just you know, we how people are really thinking, you know, I'm, when I go to a regular board meeting, not a Zoom meeting, I'm watching all your guys' responses, listening to your responses. It's so much easier to do in person, and we can't make very many mistakes this year, we gotta be really on our A-game as a school board to, to you know, lift people through this, and I just think it's important that we, we do it right, we do it according to all the guidelines, and we can do that, we have a big room down there, and there's not very many of us. We can be very, very safe doing it.
Um, can I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Inez.
My grandfather's living with us, and I'm not willing to put my, to expose myself and then bring it home potentially, and risk his life, so I'm sticking to Zoom as my preference.
I, I only speak for myself, but I won't be attending any in-person meetings until all of our students are allowed to come into the schools, I can't hold my daughter while she cries because she can't be in her classes, and then tell her that I'm going into a meeting.
I also cannot be in in-person, I have a husband who's going through chemo and myself. It's too much of a risk.
I hear you, Dave, Zoom calls are not the optimal way to do this, and it stinks not being able to see everyone's body language, and you're a hundred percent right, I just I'm, I'm in the same boat as everyone else, I, I'm not really personally comfortable with it, and I think it would not be a, a positive signal to the community while kids still aren't in classrooms to that's where I'm at.
I hadn't really thought about the signal to the community part, and that's, there's a good points. Dave, I, I personally like in, I'm, I'm really looking forward to the day when we're back together, I think we're gonna have to do that in a way that the Zoom audience can still participate, so we're gonna be doing it differently when we get back together. I don't have my grandfather living with me because he's been dead so long, I am some of the people's grandfather, and I have some underlying borderline, underlying conditions, and so for my own sake I'd prefer not to take the risk unnecessarily. These meetings they're working okay, I, I agree that they're disadvantaged, but they've also brought the community in, and I'm glad we've done them. And I would, if, if everybody else were, I don't know that I would come, even if everybody else was coming for the reasons I've said. I've had a couple of meetings at restaurants with one person at a time. That's okay, but when you get a crowd in there and you have to have the staff come, or, or they're at a disadvantage, or people who want to be in the room to watch this in public, or they're at a disadvantage. I think that would put a pressure on our room, so I'm not ready.
I'm gonna echo everybody else's sentiments as well. You know, I was just having this conversation with family regarding the holidays, like, how are we all, are we gonna spend the holidays together, what are we doing, what's safe, what's not? And kind of came to the conclusion that we're gonna keep it really small, and we're all gonna quarantine for two weeks beforehand, so that means like even going to the grocery store, we're gonna try to avoid, and I guess I'm telling you this because I'm letting you know that our family is choosing to be very specific in the risks that we do take. And while I miss meeting everybody in person, I think that the community involvement that we've been getting with the virtual meetings is huge. I know districts, this district staff team isn't meeting, you know, Rotary Group, the Newton Orderie Group is not meeting, City Council's not meeting. And I think when it's safe, we certainly When it's safe, we certainly need to be one of the groups that leads in our efforts to. Show what it is to get back into the community, but right now I don't think that's that time with numbers going up and our kids still out of school. So I also don't feel comfortable with meeting in person right now.
I, I appreciate you guys, you know, being open and honest to talk about it. I think it's, you know, something we need to. You know, to do. There's nobody on this school board who's a bigger proponent of athletics than, than Dave Brown. And we're letting kids meet, we're letting kids get together, we're letting kids come to school and work out and put in situations and. You know, we talked about Sunday being a mixed signal meeting. Which it was. How, how, how do we, how do we do that? I mean, I, I've been, I've been struggling with it. I'm kind of like, cause I coached at a different school now, I get it. I mean, I get what you, every one of your guys' comments, I get it, you know, Rebecca, I'm really sorry about Gene, I didn't know some of that right there. But. You know, I think again, maybe between now and the next board meeting, everybody can think about how, how's that perceived? I mean, we're, we're letting kids. Come and do certain kind of workouts. In sports, you know, and. We're, we're talking like us here, we're talking like pretty doom and gloom there. You guys had all had good stories about not meeting. And I agree, that's how you guys feel, you know, I, I'll support you guys a hundred percent on that. We're allowing kids to come to our school grounds. We talked about it, we had a soccer game going on Sunday, you know, as this is going, that was one of the, the issues there. And I'm like, I went to a little guy football game, there was hundreds of people. Out at the high school football fields a couple of weeks ago. I, I don't know, I'm just saying, you know, I know everybody in this board loves all of our kids in our district. Doesn't matter which school, how old or, or wherever they're from. And I've really struggled with this one because I go by our schools and I see this and at the same time I'm listening to you guys. And you're saying we're sending a mixed message. If we meet, well, we're letting them meet. And we won't meet and I think you guys just came up with six good reasons not to meet. So I appreciate your responses, but I'm like, how do we as a school board? We're allowing our superintendent or the athletic director, whoever it is. And there's no, none of you guys combined, times a thousand, like sports as much as I do. I'm, I'm so glad a kid can go out and play soccer, throw a ball, do whatever, but we're doing that right now. And I don't know, as a school board, we're gonna have to really. I think this is where I'm talking about this next year, we're gonna have to be super consistent. And, and all of our stuff when it comes to. To this, so that's my issue on this, but again, I appreciate you guys being honest, really do, but I think, you know. We need to look at every issue really tightly and I think this one, we're kind of. Kind of playing both sides of the. So, just maybe.
I hear you and what it made me think of is maybe we should have stricter rules. And not have those kids be exposed, not have those and find alternatives ways of exercising. But not have them meet and not have them be exposed because yeah, it is sending a mixed message.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I, I don't know, it's, it's a tough one for me because I, I, I want those kids out playing so badly. I know as a coach how important it is. And I just came out of a fall season at the school I'm at now. And those kids are loving it. We did everything we could to social distance, mask, distance. We came up with all kinds of goofy ways to keep them apart, but they were still in the same vicinity. We all seem to end up at Fred Meyer's and Safeway, it's kind of the same thing, mask or not, we're still in the same area. But again, I, I, I'm not trying to talk you guys into something. I appreciate you guys being so open and honest about your. You know, your grandfather Inez and Brandy, your family tight, you know, we're having the same conversation, so. I just wanted to get the ball rolling and, but I would like your guys' feedback maybe coming forward. If, if, if we're so concerned about our families. We should be concerned about every kid's family because. To me, when I think equity, that's just one of the branches of that tree, so anyway.
And that's why I said I'm not gonna be in a, a, a meeting in person until all of our students are allowed to be in person. I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight for our students before I put myself before a, a different set of rules.
How do you feel Bob about these kids being out there, being active in sports?
Yeah, I'm, I think just like anybody, I'm concerned about it, but we are following what the current health guidelines say. And just as we are doing with our in-person classes. There are folks who are working on this to try and figure out what the best way forward is. And me writing rules for myself just because I'm tired of it, I don't think helps push that agenda forward. I think working with epidemiologists, working with scientists, working with public health officials. To find safe ways to put our kids back into school is where my focus is.
So you're, what you're saying, Bob, is you, you would vote for kids being out. Playing athletics right now.
I would vote for us to follow the current guidelines that the health professionals have developed, which is what we're doing.
So far, our kids can be out there, why can't we meet then? I'm just asking, I mean.
Well, I think what he's saying is that. In what we're doing, our kids were complying with the guidelines we're getting from the Oregon health authorities. Who say that that's okay, that's what I'm understanding Bob to say. I don't know if that's what the Oregon health authorities are saying, I haven't followed that closely. But that rather than us making ad hoc decisions on our own, what little we know. He's saying we should be following the guidelines of people who've been. Either have more expertise or have been listening more broadly in the community than any of us can. And may have, we should give them some authority in that situation. I think that's where I always read what Bob's saying, rather than him making his own determination that these people get to do these things and other people don't, we'd refer to those authorities.
I think that it's a really important conversation and I'm gonna bring it back to the board because. We, you know, as board members don't necessarily have a say over who uses what field and when, obviously. But as a board, we do have. The ability to choose how we're gonna meet and I think that we heard that right now we're more comfortable as a majority meeting. Via Zoom that we've been doing. Dave, I appreciate you bringing it up and I think it's a good conversation and of course it's a conversation we're gonna continue to have. Because of the always changing situation that we're finding ourselves in these days. And I think that we all need to, you know, be aware of, of where we're at personally and we also need to be aware of how that reflects. As a board member and how that reflects in our community and to keep communication open on this one.
I really appreciate the way, I really appreciate the way you've raised this, Dave, and the way you've listened and, but you've stuck to your point as a matter of principle. And added to my understanding of the issue where you compared it to the way the athletes are doing. And I, I think we all can be a little bit uneasy about where we are, that the. I am anyway. Not, I'm not absolutely certain that we're doing the right thing, but. I appreciate the way you've listened and stuck in and been respectful and so forth.
Okay. We're three minutes early. We could continue to talk for three more minutes if anybody wants to continue, but.
Missed the last game of the World Series, so. I don't know if Dave likes sports a thousand times more than, but I have had the World Series here available on the phone and I only looked at it during break and, except for just now.
I, I saw some of your facial expressions and I was like, oh well, we're not gonna get in a conversation about who's a bigger sports fan over this, that's personal time, feel free. Meet after.
Thousand times.
Greg's had his hand up. Are you saying you're a giant sports fan, Greg?
No, I was asking if I could speak just one second. I just wanted to say a public thank you to our translators who were here for tonight. To Edna and to Gladys and we appreciate the work you've done and we did have a few technical glitches. So for any of our Spanish speakers listening to the interpretation, we do apologize for those and we will keep trying to improve as we move forward.
Yes, awesome, and thank you Greg for getting that up and running too, yeah. Okay, well, I will call us. Out of order, not out of order. Everybody stay safe and sane the next week. We'll see, we'll see on a couple of weeks. Good night.
Go Dodgers.